Mr. Lucas, if you will do our prayer and pledge, please.
If you'd please stand. Uh, your head. Dear Lord, we just thank you for this evening, God, the opportunity that we have to come together once again to represent this great city that we all love so much. Just want to take a second and speak a special blessing over this new board as we begin this new journey, God. Bless each and every one of us, God. Thank you for appointing us to these positions. And God, as we get ready to celebrate this Christmas season, God, help us to be reminded of the hope that this season brings. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is election of the vice mayor. We'll open the floor to nominations.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Lisa Commissioner Anderson.
Second.
We have a nomination, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, if I could.
Yes, sir.
I would encourage this board to not make that appointment. I'd like to remind this board that just three months ago, this city was involved in a almost three-year lawsuit from Commissioner Anderson that resulted in tens of thousands of dollars in attorney fees, a lot of stress, a lot of untruth, hurtful things that were said against members of our staff, myself, former Commissioner Derek Burks. And so I think that this would be a really bad decision and a somewhat slap in the face to the oath that we all just took. So I would encourage this board to seriously reconsider that nomination.
Mayor. I'm not privy to the lawsuit or the actions or what took place or how it went down, but that's what, that's kind of what makes me second it is the fact that it was the highest vote getter. So there's more people in this community that wants her up here than wanted me up here. And so that's what made me second this.
Any other discussion? We have a motion in a second. Ms. Johnson, if you'll call the row, please.
Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Nay.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. Next item on the agenda, approval of agenda and executive session announcements.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. Item six, public hearings. There are none tonight. Number seven, citizen comments. Ms. Johnson.
Mr. Terry Benefield.
Thank you for my three minutes.
If you'll state your name and your address.
Terry Benefield, 71, 22, Wayne's Lane, Fairview, Tennessee.
Thank you.
Again, thank you for my three minutes. Boy, y'all just took some oaths. Ain't that something? Now, the real question is, did you lie or did you not? Time's gonna tell that. And we'll see that one way or the other. Let me tell you about the people you replaced. See, some of them, most of them wanted that vote, boy, when it came time. They wanted that vote. Oh, God, give me that vote. Gotta have it. Gotta get on the board. Problem is, we never see y'all again unless we come right here. They fixing to change things down on Wayne's Lane. Gonna add a few houses, you know? About, eh, what, 140, 150, what is it? I, I found out about that about a month and a half ago. First time I ever heard anything about it. Dan, the guy that's gonna build the houses? Let me tell you, let me tell you about that guy. He came and talked to us. I ain't seen no, all the people y'all replacing, none of them come to our house, talk to us. Well, hell, we didn't even know what was going on. Nobody told us. Nobody said a word. Boy, when that boat comes around, though, we need ya. Come on, give it to us. Y'all just took an oath. Do us a favor. How about don't forget us now that you're, now you're sitting back there in the big leather chairs.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else, Ms. Johnson?
Yes, ma'am, there's one other. I can't, I can't read the name. Yes, sir.
Hello, sir. If you'll state your name and your address, please.
My name's J.J. Ebarb. I live in it. 7320 Shayla Court. There in Cox Pike subdivision, right, right behind that. My only comment is that I would ask that it be strongly considered that any plan be put forward, that the civil engineering be looked out very well, the drainage that will affect all the homes that are in the watershed. One of those is mine. And, and we would like to know as a community at some point what that plan is, what their timetable is, and, and if they're gonna put up privacy fences, those sorts of things, because none of those details have been put out so far. And, uh, it'll affect all of us, our property values and our quality of life. And so, so we'd like to be privy to that information as it goes forward. Thank you.
Thank you. That all. Thank you. Public announcements, awards and recognitions. I believe that we're gonna have our audit presented tonight. Hello, sir. Thank you for coming.
Very nice to be here on this cold December night. My name is Buddy Erie. I'm with the audit firm that completed your audit. It's gonna be relatively brief. What I would like to say is to start off by saying, I think everyone in front of me knows pretty much what the state requirements are on having an audit. Every state, local government, among other entities, are required to have an audit annually. That audit's gotta be conducted according to generally accepted government auditing standards. Those standards, among other things, require that upon the completion of the audit, that the auditor issue his opinion, his or her opinions, on, on the financial statements. In a case of Fairview, it required two opinions. The first one is on pages one or two, one and two of your, of your, of your report, your financial report. That opinion basically addresses the financial condition of the city. We're required to say whether the statements are presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, or if they're not fairly presented. And the audit basically, in your instance, states that they are presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. That's what's referred to as a clean opinion. It's a good opinion, as opposed to one that doesn't say that they are. The other opinion is on pages 54 and 55. And that particular opinion addresses internal controls, compliance with laws, regulations, and other matters that might have a material effect on the financial statements. And that opinion basically states that there were no instances of material weaknesses or significant deficiencies noted in those areas that I've just referred to. So that is really our purpose. That's the purpose of the audit. So when you get, I don't know if you've gotten a copy of the report yet, but when you do, those, those are our opinions and that's what they're for. Now, another area I'd like to just kind of touch base on, it's, it's referred to as the management discussion analysis, and it's on pages three through nine. For those of you who don't like columns of numbers, which are, there are a number of them in, in the report, this is basically a narrative, a summary narrative of the financial condition of the city. And it, it's worthwhile to take a look at it because it's, if you're just looking at the numbers, it tends to be somewhat confusing. This is the narrative overview. So it'd be something worth looking at. That pretty much concludes my, my presentation. I would like to kind of point out one area. It was kind of by, by coincidence that I noticed it, but I happened to be looking back at an old report for the city, and I noticed that I was looking at its fund balance. And the reason I singled that out, fund balance of the general fund in particular is probably the most looked at number in financial statements. Bond people look at it to determine what the city's credit rating is. Taxpayer groups look at it to see how good of a custodian the city is over the taxpayer's money. The city management uses it as a budgeting tool. So if there was one number in, in the report that they tend to look at, it's probably fund balance of the general fund. And I looked back and I looked at the 2015, June 30, 2015 report, and it had, the city had a fund balance of like $670,000. And in the end of 2000, of June 30 of 2020, the city had a budget of in excess of $3 million. That's about a 297% increase. And it, it's commendable. That's the reason I say, they say auditors are guilty of saying only the bad things about you. Well, in this particular case, I'm gonna leave the presentation with a good thing, because the city should be commended. That's, that's, that's a good achievement over a five-year period. With that, I'll just say, when you had the opportunity to look through the report, if you have any questions, feel free to give me a call. I'd be more than happy to try to address them. And that's about it. The only thing I'd like to do is wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. That's about the extent of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
It's always good to hear good news first. South comments and monthly reports, Mr. Collins.
Yes, Mayor, just a couple of things for you tonight. First, thank to, thank you to Mr. Erie and his staff. When I came on here about four years ago, we were really dependent upon our auditing firm to give us some feedback to try and make some improvements to some of, some of the lacks that he discussed tonight. We would not have been able to make those suggestions and improvements without his staff helping us with that. So thank you to him, first off, for, for their work. And secondly, thank you to the staff over the last few years. Financials for our city are, for our city are, are very important. We all know that. The staff bought in a few years ago to some work we were trying to get done to stabilize the city, particularly financially. Everyone participated, everyone works hard, and the result of that work by the staff is evidenced in the audit report that you have. I have provided the mayor with a hard copy of that. Mayor, it's in front of you. I'll submit an electronic copy to all of the elected officials. Please, please take a read over that. It's a pretty important document for us. The most important document, or the most important line, other than the cash balance, is the page that's blank where it addresses ongoing concerns and audit findings. And if you get to that page on the report, you'll find that the next line is none, and there's a blank page after that. That's the third year in a row that we've gotten an audit with no findings and no ongoing concerns, and the only three years in the last 14 years that the city has received those audits. So the staff has put forth a huge amount of effort, and I can't thank them enough. And then last, only thing I have for you tonight, just congratulations to all the elected officials. Thank you for your willingness to serve on the BOC. It's a big commitment. There's a lot of time, there's a lot of effort, but it should be enjoyable. You choose to serve on the, on the commission because you want to make the community better. It should be an experience where you look back on it whenever that time is over and realize that there was positive work been, been done by you and the community. Staff's certainly ready to do that, and we just want to thank you in advance for all the work we know will get done. So congratulations again. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Item 10, consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. Number 11 and Zoll Business, being none, we will move to item 12, new business. A, certificate of compliance renewal for Sisters Cellar, 1518 Highway 96. Owner Denise Clark.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Mayor, I'm going to accuse myself from item B and C.
B and C. Could we ask why? Could you tell us why?
Yes, ma'am. I am property owner on item B.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Anderson, if you will read the resolution.
Resolution 28-20, number one, public hearing on item B2.
You'll read the resolution, then we'll open the public hearing.
Number two, resolution 28-20, a resolution to annex certain territory upon written consent of the owners and to incorporate the same within the boundaries of the city of Fairview, Tennessee with R20 single-family medium-density residential zoning map 021, parcel P/0, parcel 056.00 Northwest Highway, 5.384 acres. Owner, Jingo Building Group.
We'll open the public hearing now on item B2. Is there anyone here to speak on that? Yes, sir. You'll tell us your name.
I'm Michael Williams. I'm with Williams Engineering. I'm here to speak on 7320 Northwest Highway concerning the annexation of the property into City of Fairview, also to rezone it to R20. The main items, I, I think I sent y'all an exhibit. I don't know if we can show that here tonight, but the property is surrounded with City of Fairview municipal zoned properties, and it actually touches on, on the west and on the east side, City of Fairview zoned properties. Also, just across the street on Northwest Highway on the west is a, a city-owned, City of Fairview property. So, yeah, as far as annexation goes, I feel it, it makes sense, just given the area and the surrounding properties and the, the owner of the, the surrounding properties to allow the annexation of it. Concerning the, the zoning of the property, the property is located in the urban growth, urban growth boundary and is part of the, in part of the 2040 Fairview comprehensive plan. It is asked in the, in the plan to accommodate residential medium neighborhood zoning, which includes R20, and also some denser options as well. Part of the exhibit that I, I sent just displays the surrounding area and the, the density of the surrounding area. Just, just west of the property, there's a 600-acre property that has eight units per acre planned at, at the, at the lot. And the, the rezoning, the R20 rezoning is, is two units per acre. And there's also some commercial to the, to the east. And if you could, if you could look back at the exhibit, it shows all different types of zonings in the surrounding area. And we believe that the R20 would make a good transition period for, for all these different zonings and all these different densities of the area.
Any questions to the speaker?
Yeah, Mayor, if I could. Mr. Williams, just so I'm clear, are you speaking as a citizen or a representative of the project?
A representative of the project, yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion? Yes, sir.
Mayor, just as a point, prior to any motion being offered on this matter, this public hearing would have to be formally closed and then...
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, no, just...
Is there anyone else to speak on this? Yes, sir.
My name's Gordon Lampley. Presenting living Dixon. Have property on Northwest Highway, three or four other parcels in the immediate area. When I received the notice of the annexation, of course, I knew it was probably coming due to the fact of the real high-dollar auction that we had when, when they sold my grandmother's property, some of it. But I have the tract that is right in the middle of these two parcels. Have 9.94 acres. And we use it strictly agriculture. And that's all it's ever going to be while we're living as a family. And I did some research, and I found out that the General Assembly passed several years ago that either a property would be annexed by referendum or by the signature notarized of the person owning it. As time goes on, and sometimes you don't hear the news until it's afterwards, but I do appreciate the fact that we did hear about it and got a, a letter telling us about this meeting tonight. Really not sure where the city limits go right now, because years ago, this city would annex roads, highways, and then try to take property from those highways and add it to annexation. Little backwards. But also, the General Assembly said, and I'm giving this to you for information, that the use of agriculture, the only way that that could be changed and annexed into the city is by a request of the landowner. So when you look at your maps after you do the annexation, and you see this little 9.94 acres there, that's, that's the reason we have it. We want to keep it as it is right now. Agriculture, we're in the county. You know, I just, we pay our taxes on it, we cut hay off of it, and that's it. Now, I don't know when you start talking about annexation, because I was involved in that big property that has got zero houses on it that was set here, and the city gave away a lot of, "Come get it, we want you." Never been a house put on that big tract, but it's right across from me. City of Fairview owns a piece of property right across from me. I guess it's for a park, green, green area or something? I don't know. But I just wanted to be a record tonight that we will not be asking for any annexation on this 9.94 acres, ever. And also, I don't know how, you asked me, "Where's the city limits?" I couldn't tell you. I saw a city limit sign on Dice Lampley Road this week, and I didn't know it was there. So I would ask maybe if it would be possible to have the city put some signage up so we know. And I do think that this gentleman made a valid point about the 140 houses or whatever, but the traffic right now on Northwest is, is pretty tough. If we're trying to get out there with a tractor and a hay roller, you better hang it up, or you better have somebody with a long neck looking both ways. But I just wanted to address the board, because I've done this before, and it's a new board, just to let you know, if you drive by there and see that 9.94 acres, why it's really there. This was, this has been in the Lampley family for many years. And thank you very much for your time. And as a board member previously in this position, and as mayor previously, you've got a tough job, and I respect what you're doing. So thank you for your time. God bless all of you.
Mr. Lampley?
Yes, ma'am.
The blue highlighted area, where is, which, which property is yours? Is it below it or above it, from lack of...
From the five acres, he and I touch each other where Elrod Road runs, and mine goes down to the corner of Dice Lampley all the way back. It's, uh, I don't know if you can see the parcel on it. Knock that pin off two more times.
Try for three.
Okay. Well, if I hadn't had your glasses on, I could probably see it, but anyway, mine is right there beside the, the, this one. Has a whole barn on it, and that's, and it runs over Elrod Road, which is in that corner there, yellow highlighted, I guess. And then I'm back against the 9.94 acres you're gonna be looking at next. So I'm touching on all my sides right there by, by property, by Northwest Highway, and, and I just want to just make sure this board knows what, what's going on with it.
Are you on the opposite side of Dice Lampley or on the same side? If you see where Dice Lampley runs, are you on the...
Okay. Okay, if you're on Dice Lampley and you come to Northwest Highway and you take a right, I'm on the left-hand side right there. That whole frontage, I got a thousand and some odd feet from Northwest corner down there at Dice Lampley. So I don't know how to tell you any, any better.
Mayor, just to help, for the, for the drawing that you're addressing, Mr. Lampley owns the property just below the blue shaded area.
Okay.
The blue, the blue shaded area is the property under, under discussion, and the property just below that is Mr. Lampley's 9.94 acres.
With the tree line.
Correct. The property just, that borders Northwest Highway.
Right.
Also is an answer for, you can see on the drawing that you have before you, Northwest Highway is highlighted in a green or green color because it's, it's, the borders, the borders of Northwest Highway are in the city limits, meaning to Mr. Lampley's point, when the city annexed the property to develop the large subdivision so the property can be continuous, contiguous, the city annexed all of Northwest Highway from the intersection of Cox Pike Road all the way to the intersection of Highway 96. That's, so the asphalt, the pavement, the right-of-way for Northwest Highway is the city limits. The properties adjacent to it, or that touch it on the right-hand side or not, in the city limits, and that's the purpose of discussion tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Gordy.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Is there anyone else to speak on this? Having no one else, we will close the public hearing on B2. All right. Vice Mayor Anderson, if you will read B2 again.
Resolution 28-20, a resolution to annex certain territory upon written consent of the owners and to incorporate the same within the boundaries of the city of Fairview, Tennessee with R-20 single-family medium-density residential zoning map 021, parcel P/0, parcel 056.00 Northwest Highway, 5.384 acres. Owner, Jingo Building Group.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion in a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler, sorry, he's, Commissioner Lucas.
Nay.
Mayor Rainey.
Nay. Are we ready to move on to resolution? Item C, resolution 2920. Item C, Resolution 2920, public hearing on item C2. Vice Mayor Anderson, if you will read the resolution, please.
Resolution 29-20, a resolution to annex certain territory upon written consent of the owners and to incorporate the same within the boundaries of the City of Fairview, Tennessee with R-20, single-family medium-density residential zoning, map 021, parcel 156.02, 7282, Northwest Highway, 9.94 acres, owners Tony and Melissa Cavender.
Thank you. We'll now open the public hearing for item C2. Is there anyone here to speak on that? Yes, sir.
My name is Michael Williams. I was representing the last property as well. The same things apply that I said originally, but I did want to note that since Northwest Highway is a city road, that if the property was annexed, then the developer would have the ability to deed right-of-way to help with future improvements on the road. And this could potentially save tax dollars for the City of Fairview. Just everything else, I said applied the same thing, but thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak on this? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing on item C2. Vice Mayor Anderson, if you will read the resolution.
Resolution 29-20, a resolution to annex certain territory upon written consent of the owners and to incorporate the same within the boundaries of the City of Fairview, Tennessee within R-20, single-family medium-density residential zoning, map 021, parcel 156.02, 7282, Northwest Highway, 9.94 acres, owners Tony and Melissa Cavender.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, just quick discussion about this property. This is really the subdivision that I like to see. Half-acre lots, bigger lots, not eighth-acre lots. This is, this is what I like to see when I think of subdivisions, half-acre lots. So I'm certainly all for this type of subdivision. That's all I have, Mayor.
Any other discussion?
I would just like to say that the improvements that will be made to Northwest Highway with the development of this property would save the taxpayers and the city a lot of money. And I feel like that's very important as we move forward with other subdivisions to, you know, expect stuff like that and help the city with the infrastructure.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Nay.
Mayor Rainey?
Nay.
Item D, Gary Darnell, if you will approach, please. You'll state your name and your address, please.
My name is Gary Darnell, 7208 Grammer Drive. May I remove this? Is that all right there, buddy?
Is he six feet away from everyone?
Thank you. Mayor Rainey, Vice Mayor Anderson, Commissioners, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak to you on a topic that I feel is very important. Some of you may remember a few years ago, I made a presentation. At that time, I was working for Grace Works, volunteering at Grace Works, and talked about the poverty level in our community and a possible plan going forward. Some of you and city officials took heart and tried to work with leaders of that organization. However, Grace Works was not able to stay in the community with the present location. And with that, said, "There is still a need." My Sunday school teacher made the statement in class one Sunday, "The poor will always be among us." But his wife quickly replied, "That doesn't mean we are not to help." In my years volunteering at Grace Works and working with our neighbors, a reoccurring theme kept servicing. Symptoms were being addressed, but not the root cause of families and individuals in need. So there was a group of individuals that felt more was needed. In the summer of 2018, the process was started for the View Community Resource Coalition to be recognized as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, which was granted in November of that year. Our mission is to strengthen community across social, economic, and generational boundaries through effective communication within our community. As in most small communities, available resources can be limited, not only in funding, but knowledge of all available government and nonprofit programs. As we all want the best for our families, there are many who struggle to provide basic needs: shelter, clothing, food, medical needs, and transportation. Through effective communication, the main goal of the View CRC is to achieve the best outcome for all involved. Our community is affected not only by individual temporary setbacks, but also a generational environment that has a much longer and greater impact on everyone, most notably our children and grandchildren. One of our goals is to address this generational environment and help those most affected to be empowered and active and strengthen our community. The View CRC has invested time and resources to develop an internet-based program that will allow the community to communicate and work together to best utilize our resources and lead us to the best possible outcomes. We understand that we cannot help everyone, but it will allow those involved or who want to be involved to share kindness and concern for all by directing them to the View CRC for assistance and participation. Through good communication, we will be able to find the best solution to the challenges presented. As our community grows, so will challenges that affect resources and more time to correct problems. The families and individuals who need help are all around us. And as a community, we need everyone, individuals, businesses, churches, civic groups, government officials, to share their expertise and strengths as we collaborate to make a difference in our community. In our last fiscal year, which ended September 30th, we were able to assist 15 neighbors with rent and utility bills, an average of $525 per family. We also assisted with transportation, healthcare, education, food, loan care, home repairs, and some loans. With the increasing awareness of the View CRC, the lasting effects of the virus and just everyday unforeseen setbacks, the number of neighbors in need will experience significant monetary support. And with that, opportunities for all of us to share hope and love that we all have for our neighbors and community. With volunteers, the View CRC projects 95% of all donations in this fiscal year to be returned to the community for neighbor assistance. With our proprietary system, we can distribute and monitor donations to achieve a high level of stewardship while helping our neighbors attain a productive life and hopefully experience their dreams while using their God-given talents. In closing, our hope is the leaders of the city will become involved by using their gifts and influence to make a real difference in the lives of all citizens. We hope the city will set the bar for the community in supporting and give assistance to the View CRC for our neighbors to be given a hand up. Thank you for allowing me to share. And if you have some questions, I'll be glad to try to answer those for you.
Mayor, if I could, not so much as a question, I just want to say publicly, I've worked with Gary Darnell at Grace Works. I can tell you that there is probably not a person in this city that cares more about the people that live in this city than that gentleman standing right there. I've watched him work with single mothers and do everything he could to meet the need that was presented. So for what it's worth, I am extremely honored and proud of him for stepping up and filling this void that Fairview now has. And thank you. Appreciate it. And is there a website that people can go to right now if they want to get involved, donate money, or if they need assistance? Is there?
The website is theviewcrc.org. There's also a place on there that if you have questions, you can send an email and someone will be glad to answer those questions for you.
I would also like to say that I have known Mr. Darnell, I guess, ever since they moved to Fairview. And I have personally roped him into doing lots of things that I'm sure that he has regretted ever speaking to me about. I will also say that after the tornado hit Fairview, Gary was one of the first people that I called to start helping people. He taught me the fine art of climbing up on a roof and scraping shingles off of a roof, which I will never forget. But I can also vouch for the fact that Gary does great things here and to help people in this community. And Gary, I thank you so much. I've even lost my voice over it. So yes. Are there any more questions for Mr. Darnell?
I just want to close with this, just so you know. We don't have unlimited funds. I know the last time I worked at Grace Works, that winter during the month of December, January, February, March, they spent somewhere on an average of $18,000 a month to help citizens in this city. And I would urge you, if there's any way possible, to help the View come up with the monies to help our citizens. I think in the long run, it will be a benefit to the city because we are putting at least 95% of the monies back into the community. We have no salary positions. Everybody is volunteer. But there is a need for funds. By helping these folks out, it in turn helps the businesses in the community. It brings someone to work that may miss work because they got to go pay the electric bill because the fire got turned off. Or they need help with their rent or other things that have come up. There's just a lot of folks in our community who are struggling during this time. I could tell you a lot of stories, but if you would like to meet later and discuss, I'd be glad to talk to you anytime. My wife still has a full-time job, which allows me to do this full-time. And I'm willing to share whatever information you need very much.
Could, Mr. Darnell, could you repeat the website again, please?
It's theviewcrc.org.
It's just View, C-R, is it, or is it The View?
The View. The View. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. 12E, ordinance 2020-27, Vice Mayor Anderson?
Item A, ordinance 2020-27, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview by rezoning 1.89 acres of property located on Lake Road, Williamson County Tax Map 022, parcel 168.01, from CG Commercial General to R-20, single-family medium-density residential, owner Denise Pickle Mangram.
Is anyone here to talk on this? Hello, sir. If you'll state your name and your address.
Good evening. Tim Mangram.
Your address?
7326 Fernvale Road, Fairview.
Thank you. Are you the owner?
No, I have this contract, I have this property under contract to purchase pending
Do we have any questions of Mr. Mangram?
Move to approve.
There's a motion in a second? Any discussion?
Mayor, if I will just say, I think like Mr. Benfield said earlier, there's sometimes a lack of discussion or explanation. So I just kind of want to, for people who are sitting out there and maybe don't know, it's, the parcel is currently commercial. It faces 96 there. The back, hack, blue half is being requested to be an R-20, which is a 20,000-square-foot lot. So it'd be essentially almost a half-acre lot. It would have to have 100-foot of road frontage to be a, to be a current lot to be used. And so just to try and explain a little bit of what's happening. It removes commercial off of Lake Road, essentially is, I think, a beneficial thing.
And is still the R-20 the half-acre?
Yes, sir. It'd be R-20,000 square foot lot.
Any other discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item F, ordinance 2020-28, Vice Mayor Anderson?
Item F, ordinance 2020-28, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview by rezoning 1.04 acres of property, map 022, parcel 176, located on Lake Road from RS40, single-family low-density residential, to R-20, single-family medium-density residential, owner Innovated Construction Co.-LLC.
Is there, oh.
Me again.
Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Mangram?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second? Any discussion?
Mayor, just, so the hatch area is currently R-20, so this parcel's next to the R-20 B. An R-20 now would be a 100-foot road frontage again in order to be able to have a compliant lot at 20,000 square foot, which I think is a beneficial thing. You have a half-acre lot, buildable lot there.
Yeah, these lots are actually, both of these lots are almost 40,000 feet, so they're almost an acre. We just asked for the R-20 because of the little narrow road frontage. And it would run contiguous with the property next door that we were just dispelled it
Any other discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mangram. Item G, Resolution 3220, Vice Mayor Anderson?
Item G, Resolution 32-20, a resolution of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, appointing city commissioners to city committees for the purpose of designating areas of interest and reporting to boards of commissioners' members.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Mr. Collins, if you could just explain it a little.
Yes, sir. The purpose of the committee, or the request of the committees, was to assist the board of commissioners with the communications for certain matters that come before the board of commissioners, and to assist the public with a point person to assist with matters that come before the board. It's not uncommon for the board, all, the group, to get an email or question about a matter that involves the city, whether it be great or whether it be small, we've gotten them from potholes to finance questions, to development questions, to whatever things that will come up, and because those communications go to all of the board members, and all of the board members aren't assigned certain areas, it makes it a little difficult to coordinate responses back to people who may be interested, and to coordinate specific information back to the board members. What we hope to do through this is to assign, quote-unquote, "areas of interest" to the four board members, the four commissioners, so that we can meet monthly as a part of those committees. The committees would involve myself, that commissioner, the mayor, and the department heads, or other senior staff for those areas, so we can meet, discuss matters that may be becoming before the board or important, and then that commissioner can then come back and report those areas of information back to the board members for action, information, other things. It would also make it easier in the event that there's not a requirement for a meeting, but someone has been assigned to one of these areas, then we will know who should respond to the citizen or the requister of information, however that would go. Again, it's somewhat informal, there's no task really assigned, other than informational back and forth, it would assist the staff with our ability to make sure that we have a voice on the BOC, specific to areas that we know we're going to be bringing to you. The request that we have, and we've, this is derived from some questions that I asked all of you regarding interest or your willingness to serve in these areas, the matter, or the request we have before you is the creation of four committees, a public safety committee, which Commissioner Dawson has expressed an interest in, public works committee, which Commissioner Anderson expressed an interest in, the planning, or planning and zoning committee, not the commission, but the committee staff, Commissioner Butler expressed an interest there, and the finance committee, the finance committee would be Commissioner Lucas. So that's how we have the resolution written. Any consideration you would give to this certainly would help us as staff, and we think would help the community generally as we communicate information back and forth.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
So, just so I understand, if we vote on this resolution, if this is approved, then those people you just mentioned, and those positions you just mentioned, those are the assignments?
Yes, that's correct.
And can you repeat those, please?
The public safety committee would be Commissioner Dawson.
Okay.
Public works committee would be Commissioner Anderson, planning, or planning and zoning committee internally, not commission, Commissioner Butler, and finance committee, Commissioner Lucas.
Thank you.
And the reason I said, just, the reason I'm clarifying this is, there's a matter-only agenda tonight for the appointment of a member to the board, a member of the board of commissioners to the planning commission, and this is not that thing, these are internal committees, that's a separate vote, as a matter, of course, for the BOC.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Item H, Board of Commissioners Board Seat Appointments. I guess we'll start with parts and landscape board, and we'll take nominations for that, correct, Mr. Collins?
Yes, Mayor, these, this resolution could be done en masse, meaning you could have one motion on this item that names the three members to these committees, because they're advisory, they're, that's a little separate task than the, than the planning commission. So, if you're, I'm sorry, the planning commission's going to need to be a separate vote, so you might as well do each of the three individually.
Okay.
I apologize.
That's good. Okay, so we'll start with parts and landscape board.
And Mayor, do we nominate?
I was going to say, can we just ask who would be interested, or do we need to nominate and vote?
You can do either.
I'm willing to hear who would like to do this. Who has interest?
I do.
Make a motion to nominate Vice Mayor Anderson for parking landscape board.
Board of Zoning Appeals. Does anyone have interest in that?
Mayor, I actually already serve on that board and would be honored to serve again.
Mayor, just a point of, there's going to need to be, on item one, there'll need to be a vote.
So you want to vote separately?
Yes, please.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on item one, parts and landscape board for Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Item two, Board of Zoning Appeals.
Motion to nominate Commissioner Lucas. Second.
We have a motion and a second for Commissioner Lucas to serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals, is there any discussion? Ms. Anderson? I'm so sorry. Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Planning Commission.
I make a motion to nominate Commissioner Butler for this position.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? I have a concern. Commissioner Butler, I know you've been on the planning commission, you do a great job, but my concern is now that you're the board of commissioners, if you have to recuse yourself from a planning commission vote, you automatically have to recuse yourself from the board vote, is that correct, Mr. Collins?
If I had any personal interest, absolutely I would recuse myself. That's the second time in eight years I've recused myself, so, just clarity. But yes, if it was my business, I would recuse myself in the planning and also the board.
Okay, I know that when you went on the planning commission, you were not developing property in Fairview. Has that changed? I mean?
I'm not currently developing any property in Fairview, I own a piece of property in Fairview that I seek to sell.
Okay, okay, thank you, sir. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second, Ms. Johnson.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Okay. Item A, Resolution 30-20, Vice Mayor Anderson.
Item A, Resolution 30-20, a resolution of the City of Fairview Board of Commissioners accepting the city's audit for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2020.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Item J, Vice Mayor Anderson.
Item J, Resolution 30-20, sorry, 31-20, a resolution of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, designating a vehicle or vehicles and equipment as surplus and authorizing the disposal of these surplus items.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Item K, Vice Mayor Anderson.
Item K, Ordinance 2020-26, an ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, to amend language in the design review manual, adopting the zoning ordinance as it pertains to Chapter Two, Preservation of Existing Trees and Site Features, Section Two-103.1, Retention of Existing Trees, subsection Two-103.1, Two, Forested Areas.
Mr. Collins, could, Mr. Sullivan, are you, explain what we're changing here?
Yes, Mayor, I can explain that to you. Under the current guidelines, if trees are going to be removed from commercial development, then the current language in our regulations state that every tree on the entire parcel be inventoried, measured, and marked for their location for the purpose of identifying what the overall value of the trees to be removed, as you all are aware, there's a calculation in the tree ordinance that provides that. Given the size of the parcel, or number of the trees on any parcel, that can be an overwhelming task. What brought this about was a property that I believe is 23 acres currently proposed for development, and under this current guideline, every single tree, again, must be counted, measured, noted, and marked for a value. What this does is allow for representative sections of the forested area to be calculated and then multiplied by what would be the total of the calculated, of the total value. This does not mean that the developer or their representative gets to determine what the representative area is, in this instance, the city's engineer would be the person to meet with the developer, property owner, whoever that is, identify what a proper representative area would be, they would use that as a true measurement of each tree, each size, each location within the representative area, and then it would be multiplied or otherwise calculated out to get the total value of the trees on the site.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Ms. Johnson, is there any other discussion? Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Item L, Ordinance 2020-29, Vice Mayor Anderson.
Item L, Ordinance 2020-29, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview by rezoning 1.24.43 acres of property consisting of map 043, parcel 006.00, and map 043, parcel 026.00, located at Wayne's Lane and Mangrum Lane, from RS40, single-family low-density residential, to an R-20, single-family, medium-density residential, planned overlay development, and approving a master development plan, owners Cory Groves and Johnny Groves.
Mr. Collins, just so we're clear, all this does is open this up for a public hearing, since this is the first reading?
Yes, Mayor, that is correct. The process you have before you is a first reading and a first reading only. Should this pass the board of commissioners, then it would open the door for the next step would be a public hearing, which is required in this instance, and after that, a consideration at a second vote or second reading. So, should this measure pass tonight, the entire development does not pass, it simply gives the opportunity to move forward to the public hearing phase of the development.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
A second for discussion.
We have a motion and a second, discussion?
So, since I've been on the planning commission for almost eight years, one of the biggest questions that we've continued to try and answer or find is in a, in a medium-density neighborhood, as our comprehensive plan, as our prior land use map, as our current land use map calls out, what is a proper lot size? And so, as this is being submitted as an R-20 PUD, it allows for up to a 10,000 square foot lot, that's what they've submitted in here, but I have, but I think based off of, in my opinion, previous approvals or denials, that, that lot size might not necessarily be the intended vision of what a medium-density neighborhood would be, especially one that borders the crown jewel of Bowie Park. And so, let me make sure I keep my notes, and if you want to tell me to be quiet, you tell me when, but just, this one's-
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that part.
If you, you tell me when to quit talking, because I'll keep going.
I'll gavel you down, hide that for a day.
So, the, in my opinion, this road's a little bit further off on connector, from further proximity for connector roads and air changes, and then it has to be accessed through Cox Run subdivision, through Cox Run Lane, then eventually Wayne's Lane on the back face, so, one of the comprehensive plan objectives is to preserve existing neighborhoods and ensure that the development adjacent and surrounding existing neighborhoods is compatible in development character. So, in my opinion, having, having a community that's only access to the current zone community, which is an R-20 community, it doesn't necessarily make sense or capture that intent to have the smaller lot sizes on the backside through, through this property. So, I have a few questions or recommendations for possibly increase the lot sizes, we've seen some previous submittals come to this board before, they had a larger amount of lots, smaller amount of lot size, then they ended up, you know, adjusting to a larger lot size, it yielded smaller lots, but then turned it up a better product. So, aesthetically, this, how this sits, it backs up to our park, I just hate to see the smaller 80-foot lot, the smaller in size, the seven-and-a-half-foot side setbacks, on the front setbacks, it's only 20-foot deep, in, in my opinion, you park a car in the driveway, it's going to be hanging into the sidewalk, so could we visit a deeper front setback? Do the side setbacks allow, allow for proper drainage? Do they allow for HAC equipment? I mentioned Cox Run, do we review Cox Run from, you know, what is its current status? If it's going to have a lot of construction activity and access, does it need some kind of repair or adjustment? The next line item that I had a question about is the park buffer, it shows 25-feet buffer all the way around the entire property, that's something that you do just to get an access adjustment from where it touches an R-20 zoning, the way you don't have to match it, you give the buffer, they have plantings planned, but there's no additional distance on the, on the park. One of our comprehensive plan objectives was to add a buffer requirements in the zoning ordinance and/or the subdivision regulations for proposed development adjacent to Bowie Park, and so I know we haven't had time to accomplish or dig into those goals yet, but I think we get one, kind of one shot, to kind of set the precedent of what, what kind of buffer do we desire to our park? And so, this is something I think we're going to need a lot more, you know, discussion on, of what is our goal, if there's going to be a neighborhood here, how far away do we want it from the park, do we want access from the park? Our future land use map even shows a huge dotted line around Bowie Park to, to create a buffer, so what is the size? In our entire subregs, there's only one area that speaks to a buffer, it's in, it's in a section that doesn't even relate to this, but it references 125-foot from public parkland, that's the only details anywhere in it in regard to a public parkland setback. Percy Warner Park has a, which is just trying to reference, has 100 to 200-foot buffer in several areas where a neighborhood backs up to Percy Warner and they'll be there. Another item was the walk, walking trails and greenways, they have a proposed access point into the park, one thing, the 2040 comprehensive plan, citizens got into groups of five to 10, everybody presented on a big map, they drew walkways, they drew bike trails, they drew all these great things that they wanted to see as a part of the future of Fairview, and, and one of the lines that ended up getting drawn was through this property into the park, and so I think there's a great opportunity, this can be a great neighborhood, but just maybe, I just don't get the feels from it right now. But there's been a lot of question of do we want access to the park? Right now, the entire perimeter of the park on Crow Cut is fully open to the perimeter trail, so there, you know, you could, you could access it either way. And then, so the discussion of us, if, you know, could this be the start of a greenway? If it comes out of the park, could it wrap around this project to eventually attach to future parcels to where somebody from Cox Pike could take the greenway all the way into the park one day to enjoy it, you know, and so, those are my few notes and questions and discussions.
Thank you. So, here again, just so I understand, this is to open, this is only to have a public hearing on the property, and the second reading would come after that? I would, so, is there a motion and a second?
Mayor, do you mind if I say one more thing?
I do not mind at all.
I don't have as detailed notes as Commissioner Butler, but I, I think we've got some more work to do in this subdivision. This is highly important. This is highly important to Bowie Park, to the citizens of Bowie Park, and we want to get this right. I, I love the idea of having a subdivision there. I think incorporating it into the park is something that, that is great. I, I love the idea, I love the concept. But I still think there are a few things that we have got to work, work out to make this beneficial for, for, for everybody here in the city of Fairview. And, and something that I don't want to do is to keep putting the developer off and off and off. If we send this to a vote, the, the next time, I, I wonder, and, and Mayor, I, I don't know how we would do that, but maybe where we voted not to send it tonight, but could we have some type of work group for this?
Commissioner Dawson, to, just, just to clarify, I believe there is a motion and a second on the floor.
Okay.
That is a motion and a second to approve, if I understand.
Okay.
So, to accomplish your goal, my suggestion would be that that motion be withdrawn.
Okay.
And in its place, a motion be offered to table this item.
Okay.
If the motion to table were successful, then I would offer a second motion of the BOC to schedule a public hearing and a work session with the developer and interested parties, so that anyone involved would be able to have this discussion openly. So this, this will be three parts. If, if it's the pleasure of the board, withdraw the existing motion, offer a motion to table. If there's a second in, in it passage, then the third motion will be a motion to schedule a work session between the developer. It would include a public hearing or public participation for discussions further on the project.
I have a question.
Thank you.
So if we table the motion and the second?
You'd be withdrawing the motion in the second.
Okay, I'm sorry, if we withdraw the motion in the second, does that mean that we are not opening this up to a public hearing? So would it make sense that we would have a separate public hearing, and then have a workshop?
Mayor, my fear is, from hearing the conversations that there are, my fear is that if this were to go to a vote for a first reading, it's going to fail as a first reading, which substantially, substantially changes the future of the discussions of this development.
Okay.
So my, my opinion is the wisest move at this point is to withdraw the motion in the second, move in second to table the matter before you, and then have a third vote for a, a public meeting, work session with the developer, and invite the public to discuss this, this matter specifically. That continues to give the project life. A failure of a first read is going to eliminate project life going forward.
Understood.
Mayor, I will withdraw my first.
And who had the second?
I withdraw my second, Mayor.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion to... Motion to table, see, I'd forgotten what you said, I didn't pay attention.
I'll make a motion to table.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to table this project. Ms, is there any more discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
A motion, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to schedule a, a workshop and a public hearing on this development with the, with the developer.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion?
Mayor, if it's the pleasure of the board, what we would likely do in the interest of having participation and known, known participation amongst the group, what we would likely do is staff would attempt to schedule us for the second BOC meeting in February. And we would have that work session prior to the BOC meeting, so we know everyone's available on BOC meeting nights and work to get that information out. I think that would just be the easiest date, unless there's an alternate preferred date by the board members.
Do we need to amend the motion to include the date?
Motioner's preference. But the, the second meeting in January will be.
January or February?
January, I'm sorry.
21st.
The 21st.
Does the motioner want to amend the motion?
Move your second. I'll amend my motion to include, to have this workshop on January 21st, or the third Thursday of January.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Okay, communications in the mayor and commissioner. I'll start on Mr. Lucas's end of the podium.
Thank you, Mayor, I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Congratulations to Vice Mayor Anderson and the other commissioners for being sworn in tonight. Hope that everyone here has a merry, merry Christmas, and we will see you next year. That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Mr. Dawson?
Yeah, Merry Christmas to everybody, and Happy New Year if I don't see you. Congratulations to, to all of the, the members on the board. It's going to be great to work with you these next few years. Also, super happy about the vaccinations coming to Middle Tennessee today. Many people are getting vaccinated for, for COVID-19, and we pray that this is the beginning of the end, for sure. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Mr. Butler?
Congratulations to everyone up here, and I'm, I'm humbled and happy to serve. Thank, thank you to the citizens for having me here. I've had a lot of good discussions this week with a lot of citizens. Feel free to reach out and talk about this, you know, this future workshop or anything. But congratulations and Merry Christmas.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
I just want everyone to know how much I appreciate their support and trust that they have put in me to represent this board. I'm open to speak to anyone at any time. I would like to see more discussion, so that everyone knows at all times what's happening out here in Fairview, and what's being planned. And I would love to have everyone's input, so that we can work together as a community to make our community the best it can be. Congratulations to everyone on the board, we have a wonderful group here. I believe that the next several years, we're going to see just some great things happen. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. We've had, you know, a lot of us have had a hard year this past year, with all different kinds of things going on. And I just want to, you know, to see things move forward better, and us all, you know, working, coming together. Thank you.
I also want to congratulate everyone here. I was almost glad that I was sworn in earlier, so that my grandson could swear me in tonight. I still think he's two, and I'm shocked he can read. But Merry Christmas to all of you, please be safe, be careful, and enjoy time with your family when you can. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Mayor, Mayor, just as a reminder, there is a reception for all elected officials and their guests. Please make yourself at home if there's anything you...